Well, thanks all of y'all for coming again tonight. We're continuing our way through the budget. We'll pick up where we were last meeting. We didn't quite get to Public Works, so we're gonna start out with Joe going through a couple of slides. You've kind of seen him, but he's gonna talk a little bit more about what's going on. Then we're gonna get into the capital plan, kinda hit some of the bigger highlights there. We'll talk a little bit about where we are with fund balance. I think you've heard me talk, we've got an imbalance in our budget. We're spending more money than we've got coming in, but we don't wanna necessarily leave the impression that we have to go out and borrow money either. We have plenty of fund balance, and we'll talk about that. And then, we'll spend a little time talking about revenues and some of the recommendations that we have on increasing some of our fees and some areas that we wanna look at further. And then, really, it's open forum after that. So with that, Joe, you wanna walk your way through?
I will. The slide you got up there now is Public Works Department. We've got eight positions up there, and right now, we've got seven full-time employees. We're missing one employee. Hopefully, by March, we'll have all the positions filled. Have two seasonals in the summer to help out with parks. And go to the next slide, we'll go over a few things that we have done this year.
Can I ask you a quick question, Joe? No plans for staff expansion in the coming year, then?
Not at this point, no. I think what we have is sufficient. If we fill the position that's open right now, we should be in good shape. And some of the projects that we got done with Silver River Preserve, the observation deck, the two sets of swings, the bridge, the water treatment plant, we're ongoing with that. Right now, you know, water plant is just trying to keep the old plant running until our new plant is online. We got the solar speed limit signs up on Main Street and First Street. We got Spruce Meadows basketball court, we got a new basketball hoop, plus new asphalt, new painting. The Par- Par- Pond Park, we're hoping to get the shelter finished this year and the playground fall protection in. And we got the Sunrise Water Storage Tank, number two, back online. Everything's done there. We should be closing that grant out here, hopefully, by the end of this month. The Home Avenue project, what a challenge, but it's complete, it's done, and it looks really good. Town Hall electric sign and Town Hall front doors, the windows should be in, hopefully, by the end of November. And we put up skate park lights, I don't know if any of you noticed that.
Yes, those look really nice.
One of them has failed, so we've gotta replace it already, so we'll get that next week. And then, the water treatment plant, we've got the fan press onsite, we're still in the process of installing that. And then, next year's budget, some of the things we'd like to get done. Phase one and two of Grand Avenue, which comes from Pickett to 16th Street. Replacing the ductile iron pipe there, getting the water line and the irrigation out from between the two houses that go into Lion subdivision.
That'll be nice, yeah.
I'd like to get H Street reconfigured from Main to Grand Avenue. New sidewalks, new drainage.
So, I don't mean to interrupt, but phase one is Pickett to 16th?
No, that's one and two.
Oh, that's one and two combined, okay, okay.
Phase one would put us right between, right just west of Kim Avenue.
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Did receive a $500,000 grant from federal mineral lease, so that will help with that project.
Nice.
And also, I'd like to overlay Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Sixth Street from Grand Avenue north to the top of those streets, to the, you know, Fifth and Sixth to the ditch and Fourth, all the way up to the top. There will be some fire hydrant replacement on some of those streets. And the pedestrian bridge in Seventh Street, we'll be like to keep on working on that. Community Park, hopefully, we'll get that started this year, next year also. Have that done before the end of the year. And we need to, like to acquire the Jensen property on Front Street and also the water conservancy, or at least keep talking to those people to see if they're interested. Utilities, phase one of the water treatment plant, we're gonna keep going with that. Phase two, and then, we'd like to do some ice pigging through town, all of Old Town, and all the pipes if possible. Getting a new water plant, so cleaner pipes, and that should help with some of our water closet. And then, some ductile removal from on Seventh Street and on the frontage road, is that we get rid of all the ductile, we'll have a better, safer water system. The Magenies won't stick to the class pipe or the C-900 pipe as well as it does the ductile.
And the furniture is to, or from the water plant?
Yes.
Okay.
There's still some ductile there. We'd like to get it all out of the water plant road, so that way, we can pave the water plant road going into the water plant, but we'd like to get the ductile out of there and change to C-900 first. And wastewater plant, we're planning to keep up on the Regulations 85 with the state, so that we can stay ahead of them. And then, we'll just keep working on the lift station at KOA to see who's gonna upsize that, whether it be us, or the tiny homes, or KOA themselves. And on irrigation side, we wanna do an analysis, what we need, what size pipes we need, because right now, we cannot pump all of our water. We started upsizing the pipe with the Home Avenue project, we put a new line in there, but that's gotta continue up in the Fourth Street and in the Ballard, and reconnect it, so we gotta analyze that, take some engineering. And that's it for me, and...
Well, and I'll just mention a couple other, couple other things in...
One and 1400 block of Ballard. We have that engineered, and we'd like to complete that next year.
Oh, okay. So, I guess, my question to that is, so, the money that was in this year's budget for that, was that for the whole thing, or just the engineering portion?
No, it was the whole thing, but Home Avenue kinda went over budget.
Okay, so then, those monies were used for that. Okay, so now Ballard is basically rebudgeted, in a way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
If that makes sense.
And, you know, just, a lot of people will ask what other things Public Works does. I mean, and there, we can point to a ton of, you know, maintenance things that they do, you know, from cutting grass in the parks weekly, sometimes maybe even twice a week, but, you know, little things like, you know, the, on Main Street, the grates around the street trees, because the trees were growing, they were getting, the grates were getting pushed up. It's not a simple task to get down there and cut those cast iron forms so that those grates sit back to where they're supposed to. I mean, that's a little project, but it's a pretty important project, because we don't want people tripping along the way. But, I mean, Public Works does all the unseen things in the community that, you know, you just drive by and you don't necessarily notice them.
Unless they're not doing it.
What?
Unless they're not doing it.
Unless they're not doing it, then we'll hear about it occasionally.
They're saving us from all those bad things.
They're saving us from all the bad things, you know, in the wintertime, when it snows, they're the ones out there early in the morning plowing the roads, and, you know, just making sure that people can get to work.
And that the pipes don't bust? Or they're fixing the pipes if they bust?
Fixing pipes if they bust, I mean, they got...
They were out last night.
The crew got called out last night because somebody, you know, popped a water service line. They were digging probably when they shouldn't have, and they popped the line, and so we had to have a whole crew come out and figure out a way to get it shut off, you know? So those are little things that they do, but, you know, I think it's, you know, it's the maintenance, it's the unseen maintenance of the town that Public Works is really responsible for, and, you know, I think we all take it for granted. When you see a police officer, you see a police officer.
Hey, look, I see a police officer!
There he is!
Thank you. Well played, sir.
It was just like fortuitous. But, you know, so, you know, you see the squads driving around, but you don't necessarily see our, you know, the Public Works crews doing the work that they do all the time. You know, I don't know if there's any other little things that they did that were really impactful this past year.
If you notice, like your parks, your trash is always emptied, they do their rounds every morning.
Yeah.
Your building maintenance, you know, it's changing your filters once a month, or whatever the building needs. There's a lot of little things that we do. We stay busy.
Then...
And events.
I was gonna say, key component for events.
Yeah.
Key component for events. We have a larger crew than a lot of communities of similar size, but we also don't contract out many of the services that we provide. The Public Works crews do excavation, pre-work for some of our construction projects, they do all our building maintenance, they fix all the problems that we have. If we didn't have the crew size that we have, we'd be contracting those services out, and we'd be paying more money than we are with having the employees on hand, and it allows us to do a lot more in the community. So I think it's really important, kinda, to mention, kinda, the unseen things that Public Works does on a day-to-day basis that you don't always think about.
I have a quick question for Joe. When the irrigation system was put in town, that was all PVC, right? So that's pretty much a lifetime, we don't have to budget down the road replacing mains or anything, that's...
No, we just got a budget for upsize in our mains, because we...
Yeah, but I mean, as far as the rest, it was pretty much like all the Sir Eldon in the alleys, all of that, that was all PVC.
It's all PVC. There's some areas of town where it's a thin wall PVC, which someday, we'll think about replacing that to a class pipe or a C-900.
But even, even those pipes eventually will need to be replaced.
Well, no, but I mean, it's nothing to do...
You're looking at, you know, the life cycle of a pipe, even ductile iron is 60 to 80 years.
Right.
Problem with ductile iron, it creates some of the water problems that we have, and if you have acidic soils, that's, it corrodes and it fails. The PVC pipe is much better, and we'll...
I mean, I'm just thinking in budget, you know, that we don't have to start worrying about putting something away for down the road.
No, and, you know, in our irrigation maintenance budget, we are able to do that ourselves. So if we have a bad pipe through an alley, we're able to go replace it ourselves, we don't have to hire it out, we can get it done, and we've had sufficient budget in that line item to get that done through the years.
When that happens, Joe, are you upgrading them, sort of to dig once?
Yeah, we'll upgrade it to a PVC pipe, you know, either C-900 or a class pipe, which is a thicker wall pipe, which will last a little bit longer.
Great.
And then, I had, I'm just mentioning this, just, you know, just to mention it, someday, it would be nice, you know, because like when you guys have a water leak or something like that, you're out there in the mud and with the excavator, and, you know, it would be nice to someday have a hydroexcavating truck, and I know they're half a million dollars or more nowadays, but it would be nice, just save you guys time, especially in inclement weather, you can just go out there. The hydroexcavation, it's basically a glorified vacuum, you know, that they can go out there and just suck up the mud and the dirt, and they can get to the pipe, you know, so much faster than with the machine, you know? And it's just, I'm just saying that is something, you know, to think about for the future.
I think in the future, yes, but right now, you know, we can hire like Brand X, $250 an hour.
Yeah.
And they can have one of our water services backed out within an hour.
Yeah, you can't even own a maintenance truck for that place.
Yeah, so, right now, we're good on hiring that out, and I did put some money in the budget for some of that hydrant.
Oh, okay, okay.
Do that, in case something does come out.
Yeah.
Like some of the yards in Demelby, the utilities and everything are so close, you got a water service problem, you can't, it's all handy, and so you hire one of them to get it the whole way.
As we get larger, that'll be an equipment piece that we will consider, but right now, I think...
And I, yes, and I understand, right now, no, but, you know, it would be nice, you know, in the future, you know, to do that.
Future will need a lot of things.
Oh, yeah.
Shades, you'll need shades. So then, that gets us into the capital plan, and I have to put my own glasses on, so I can see how small those numbers are on that page. But when you look at our total, you know, capital plan for the next year, we're looking at spending approximately $5,067,000. A lot of that is public works-related items, streets, et cetera. And then, we've got equipment of about $455,000 for a total capital plan of about $5.5 million. Of that, we have sources identified in the budget of $4.3 million, which leaves a required 2025 general fund support or borrowing, and I put the borrowing in there just 'cause it's, I'm not saying we're borrowing money. We have about $1.2 million that has to come from the general fund. We are carrying over some dollars from this year that we're not going to spend. Community Park, we're not doing that project in 2024, so that's $300,000. And we have probably, we budgeted $75,000 to do work here in Town Hall, above and beyond the doors and the windows. We're not gonna spend all that, those dollars this year, so we're rolling those dollars, because one of the items that's included is a space needs analysis, and so that $50,000 will be rolled. So that, that sets us up for a planned use of reserve for capital expenses of about $856,000. And that's gonna cover our major initiatives, the property acquisitions that we've talked about, you know, we're looking at acquiring the Anderson property across the street so that we can clean that up. We're talking about acquiring the Jenkins property, which is down on Front Street, so we can realign Front Street and add some parking for downtown. We've got the Seventh Street pedestrian bridge and plaza. Our big project, streetwise, is Grand Avenue, and then, we've got some work to do in Spruce Meadows Park as well, which is some fall protection, and I'm trying to remember if there's anything else as part of it.
No, I think it's just fall protection.
It's just the fall protection, which is something we're supposed to do. So then, if we go to the next page, gets into a little of the detail of some of the items that are included. We've got the, in administration, we've got the space needs analysis for $100,000, we're hoping to get some grant monies to help us with that. The Anderson property acquisition, we have that in the budget for $130,000. We've got a new phone system that's included, which gives us total projects of about $233,000. How we fund that is $75,000 of Dolea Grant, Brownfield Grant to $50,000, 'cause we're hoping to get, as Director Santeno has said, we can't access the Brownfield remediation monies until we own a property. So, once we own the property, we would hope to be reimbursed for the actual cleanup of the property, and then, it will be the board's decision of what it wants to do with that property, whether they wanna dispose of the property and sell it to somebody so a house can be built, or a duplex or something like that, or whether they wanna hold the property for perhaps future parking.
So the Brownfields, is it a grant?
Yes.
And it goes, it's gonna go to this Anderson property?
It's gonna go to clean it up.
Okay.
And, you know, I, you know, the Anderson property is a bone of contention, because it is one of the biggest eyesores that we can have, and the fact that people have to drive by it to get to Town Hall and the library, it's just not a good look for us.
It's not a good look.
Well, potentially, community safety issues and things too, depending on what's over there.
Yeah, there might be a community safety component in there, because you've got all sorts of...
Who knows what?
Yes, on that property. The new phone system, I'll just call out, even though there's a cost to the phone system, it's actually going to reduce our monthly cost for phones, so it will pay itself back in the first year, and our future years, it will be less expensive to operate the phone system for the organization.
So we're just leasing the equipment?
No, we're buying the equipment.
And we pay a subscription for the services related to the equipment?
Yep.
So if we get out of the contract for the service, what happens to the equipment?
We keep it.
And it connects to what else?
Well, it would connect to another voice-over IP system.
Okay, but it'll connect to any, it's not proprietary?
My understanding, it is not.
Okay.
'Cause they're just, we're, the software is what drives the phone, you can hook whatever phone you want to it, to my understanding, and these are just general phones that we're ordering. Nicole, you wanna talk about your community development software for a minute? I got you, just as you took a bite, too.
I know. So I've been doing demonstrations with different software programs, and I think we've narrowed it down to one. They did send us a contract, it's a three-year contract, I'm renegotiating with them, because I told them we wanna do a one-year contract and see how it goes before we bind ourselves into a three-year contract. But it would essentially put everything that the, that community development does in an online software, so people can apply for permits online, they can apply for licenses online, they can schedule inspections online. It would make it more user-friendly for today's world, and then, we can also have a computer in our office for anybody that's not as technology savvy, that wants to come in and do it in person, and we can help them with that. But it'll track everything in real time, and one of the good things is, it's even for like land use and zoning stuff, they cannot progress past it to the next step until they enter in everything that's required. And so, it'll help us along the way of, hopefully, processing things faster, because we're gonna be missing less information, because they can't even put in an application until they have everything that they need. So it'll deter them from giving us incomplete applications, and it will hopefully motivate people to get all their applications complete before they try to turn them in.
And it's web-based, it's not desktop software?
It, no, no, it's a, it's through a system, it's through Cloud Permit. So I've looked at iWorks and I've looked at Cloud Permit, but they have a mobile, you can do it through your desktop, but then they also have a mobile system. You're talking that, like, it's not a system that we can just use and not have the oversight with.
Do you use a web browser to access it, or is it a program that sits on the desktop of your machine?
No, it's a web browser.
Okay, so it'll integrate with the website, is where I was going.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever, when the website comes about in the coming year...
Yeah.
It'll have the ability to be added to that.
It will, yeah. It's just like our rec software, there's a link that it'll just redirect, we can just, like, on the web, on the rec one, I just have a, for youth sports, click here, and then it redirects to that different app.
Takes you over to their site.
Yeah.
Does it do language translation?
Mm-hmm. It's all ADA compliant. They've been dealing with a lot of municipalities in Colorado, and they have everything up to date for the House bill.
Okay, that moves us to the Police Department, where we have a bunch of items that we talked about last week a little bit, but we've got patrol rifles, ballistic helmets, rifle-rated threat plates, less lethal launchers, and the vehicle dash cams, and they're for all the squads, not just three of them. But, total of about $114,000, and that's all coming out of general purpose revenues. Lieutenant is here, if you have any questions regarding the need for any of those, or any of the details that you might want. These are not necessarily items that are an annual thing, although I assume the dash cams, there's gonna be an annual expense.
The dash cams is an annual expense.
What is the less lethal launcher, like bean bags, or what are they?
No, that's the, it's like a sponge round, and it's a, it's 40 millimeter, so it's actually like this big. It's a single launcher. We're transitioning from the bean bag, which is a 12-gauge shot out of a shotgun, to the 40-millimeter launchers.
We got a longer distance, or you have to be just...
They have a better stopping power, and what, nationwide, what's, what they're finding with the, with the bean bag is, because it's a smaller round, you're actually penetrating the person. The sponge round is more, less lethal than what a, the 12-gauge bean bag round would be, so it's safer.
You guys have tasers?
We do.
Okay, I just...
I think we should arrange a demo.
Do we have a volunteer?
Are you volunteering?
No.
Because we don't have that much time for the line that would form. Kidding aside, how much of an increase does this represent versus prior year's capital plans for the Police Department? Like, how much is it going up?
It's actually going down, because we're not buying any squad cars this year. We, you know, the, originally, there was a squad car in the, in the, in the budget, but that's been pulled back out, because we're not filling a position at this point. We're gonna let our academy candidate run through the academy, and we're not gonna necessarily just add the plus one, because if you, if you recall, we were staffed at requirement, I think it was 10, and we had the plus one for a brief moment of time, even though one was in the academy. But we were gonna be at the plus one standard, and after Detective Corio resigned, chief indicated that we would not fill that position at this point, and that would come down at a later date. I think, you know, we had a higher of opportunity in there, and so, we did, and that's why we were the plus one, and now, we'll just be at the standard. It's still gonna take a little time for us to get to the full-on 24/7 staffing that the board has desired to get to, but when it's straight capital expenses, because we're not buying any squads this year, we're actually down in terms of our capital expenses for the Police Department.
That's good. I was thinking, when I got the packet, about increases in capital, as well as increases in our general budget items, just trying to keep them aligned with where our revenues are coming from and managing those costs.
We're also gonna explore the future, when we do have to replace squads, of starting to maybe move more to a leasing program, so that our squads are continually rolling over, and we're not dealing with these later, later-model vehicles that require a lot more maintenance, and we just keep a fresh fleet.
Yeah, we talked about that a couple weeks ago, and staggering them over years, so that it just becomes a recurring.
It's just a, it's just an ongoing operational cost, it's not even really a capital item any longer, because you're just taking a lease out and you're building the lease payment into the operational budget.
Would it be, and I have no idea which would be better, if, maybe leasing would be better, but if we just built in the budget, like, this year, we don't need a car, but we add some extra to the budget, so that they have, like, the police have a surplus, so that when they do need a car...
You can, you can do that, that's, we talked about it two weeks ago, it's basically creating a depreciation account.
Right, okay.
The hard thing about depreciation accounts is keeping the money set where it's supposed to be, and leaving it where it is, and not turning around and spending it, you're also at that point, building more reserves on the years that, you know, you're adding to that reserve number, which I know that in years past, the board has had some discussions and a level of heartburn over the level of fund balance that the town actually carries, because it is the taxpayers' money.
Right.
And out of curiosity, the patrol rifles, do you guys trade in the old ones, or...
That is something we can look at. The issue with them is they're 15 years old, so we're not gonna get much for trading them in.
Yeah, I just didn't know how that process worked.
It's gonna be minimal, yeah.
Gotcha.
Do we have a prioritized list? I don't, in the unlikely event that we have to say we can only support X amount in capital for the Police Department, is there a prioritized list? I guess I should've asked the same thing of Public Works for its capital projects in the upcoming years.
Well, I'll just jump in and say that, number one, the dash cams and the protective gear need to be purchased, simply because they're a protection to not only our officers, but they're a protection to the town as well. The dash cams will protect us in the event that there is an incident, that the footage becomes important. It could also hurt us if we're doing something wrong, but the defense is more important than anything, and then, you know, the threat plates, those are important, because there are a lot of people out there with high caliber weaponry, and we need to protect our officers. As to the other one... and we need to protect our officers. As to the other ones, I'll let you speak to them.
I would say that the patrol rifles are up there as far as how much we need them. Just because the current rifles are 15 years old, we're having some maintenance issues with them. The ability to clean them, to keep them clean, we're having issues with that. So I would say at the bottom of the list would be the, the launchers.
Yeah, the rifles, we're not going to have every year.
No.
Yeah.
Neither are the launchers, I wouldn't think.
No.
And that, I don't mean to imply that we should be drawing some arbitrary number line in the sand and say you can't say more than X. As we get through our budgetary discussions and get to final approvals, we may have to do some belt tightening. We haven't seen all the numbers yet. That's why I was asking, do we have a prioritized list? So that if we get to that moment, what are one or two things that can maybe fall off for the upcoming year? I'm not saying I want them to. I'm saying we may need to in the next couple of weeks or month or two as part of the budget process. And it's just making sure that, that the lists that we're, we're bringing are prioritized.
I think we can, we can have that prepared so that if, if that discussion comes to bear and there is some belt tightening that the board wants to do, we'll have that information.
Okay. Yeah, and it may also be a byproduct of the costs, right? Because a $6,000 cost versus a 45 is a much bigger chunk of an overall capital spend. So you may be able to get three things done or one thing, that sort of logic. And, and again, I want to be clear about this. I'm not saying at this point we need to do that, but it would help us to have a prioritized list so that if we do get to that point, we can make those decisions quickly.
Yeah, not a problem.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
So you'll get the kick at the can with Public Works because the next several slides go into a little bit more detail of the big Public Works projects. So you'll get, you'll get, you'll get your wish to ask that same question again. So, you know, and Joe can jump in on, on these as well. Grand Avenue should say Phase One and Two. It's replacing water lines and pavement. Project estimate is $1,172. We did, as Director Lundin indicated, we did receive a $500,000 federal mineral lease grant. We had budgeted in 2024 $500,000 to come out of the water fund for this project, which leaves about $173,000 that we need to budget for next year. The board certainly could reduce the scope of the project. We're just trying to move our way through to make sure that we've got, well, we're getting rid of the ductile iron.
Right.
One. And it's a, it's a healthy, it's a healthy project. We'll get into, you know, we've got, once we do Pickett to 16th, then we've got to do 16th to 7th Street, and then 7th East or West.
All the way to First, eventually.
Eventually. So this is a multi-year project for us to redo Grand Avenue. And, and so there's a fair, fair amount that we're moving forward with. I, I would assume that we will try for a fall FMLD grant in 2025 for the next phase of Grand Avenue as, as somewhat of an offset.
Yeah, and then there's a section of that part they're going to replace. There's like three water lines in one section. So if you can get rid of, you know, two of them and just have the one.
Oh, there's, there's also some transite, four-inch transite. We have some fire hydrants that are on four-inch lines, which if there was ever a fire, they'd just, had to use a pump truck, it would collapse the line.
That's true, because there, yeah, there is that, there's a hydrant down there that you can't use because it's, it's too small.
That will be hopefully replaced this first phase.
Yeah.
First and second phase.
Yeah, I, I agree. There are cost savings. And again, the dig ones philosophy, if there are two or three that we can handle in that one time, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that when we're planning the budget and allocating capital. I wouldn't see us saying, no, don't do it. I, I would see us potentially having to say, we need to take another two years to get the full scope of all the work done to extend those capital needs over a longer period so they hit us less each year for the duration of the project. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I think.
No, that makes sense.
The cost of the Grand Avenue project will decrease once we get past 7th Street. We already have a good water line in the road there. It's PVC pipe. But we still have some soft spots. We have some sidewalks issues. So it's, and we can't overlay the road or repave the road until we get all our infrastructure done in the road, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's pricey for sure, but yeah, I mean, I'm definitely for this.
Ballard Avenue, that was the mention. It's a $258,000 project. 1400 block, basically remove the asphalt to match this new sidewalk that we put in, sidewalk grade. And, you know, this is a project Public Works is going to do a lot of the upfront work. Obviously, we're not doing the paving.
We won't do the paving or the concrete work, but we'll prep for everything.
Yeah. Community park refurbishment, this is an ongoing project. If you recall, we received a $900,000 GOCO grant to do a refurbish of the entire park. Total project cost is $1.2 million. The $300,000 was included in the 2024 budget. We really haven't spent any dollars to this point. We've been doing our community outreach, which is really concluded. We have to compile that and decide what we're going to do, and then have somebody design it and actually bid it out at that point. So that one is really a carryover project. Then we've got, you know, annual street maintenance, which is about $500,000. And you can see the listed projects that are out there, 4th, 5th, 6th, 4th Ballard Avenue, and then 8th Street. Do you have a priority on those, Joe?
My priority would be 8th Street. If you've noticed, we've got from First to 9th Street, everything's overlaid from Main Street to Grand, except for 8th Street. I'd like to get that done. 8th Street was kind of put on hold because it needs a little engineering for the drainage. And I'd like to get some better sidewalks in there on both sides of the road because that's a very busy section of 8th Street with miners' claim there.
That's, you know, yeah, I mean, that, that's a good idea. And then 8th and Grand, I mean, obviously, the engineering for the Main Street will.
Right.
Tie into that.
When we do Grand, we'll tie into all of our side streets. And that's another project down the road. All of these little cul-de-sacs, cactus, and all these little spurs off of Grand, those water lines are going to need to be replaced. A lot of those are four-inch.
Yeah.
And so it's a lot of projects. It's going to take several years to get them all done.
No, you're right. Yeah, and so many of those little streets aren't paved anyway. So it'd be nice to, yeah, redo the water lines and get those paved and all up to snuff. And, yeah, and I mean, some of those, yeah, the four-inch lines, if there's a fire.
So the priorities on that list would be Ballard, 1400 block of Ballard and 8th Street would be the priorities on that list.
I have a question about the Grand Avenue project. Does that include sidewalks?
There's already sidewalk on Grand in Phase One and Two on the north side. So that'll stay there. And then on the past 16th, we'll probably try to pipe the drainage ditch and add more parking and upgrade our sidewalks.
I was just curious what all that included, that price tag.
This Phase One and Two is just replacing sidewalks when we replace the water service.
So then, continuing on, obviously, one of our bigger projects right now is the pedestrian bridge in 7th Street Plaza. We're in the middle of the planning and design work. That was a $1,103,000 project. Our estimate for our design and engineering costs for 2024 is about $190,000, which leaves the balance of 913,000. That'll get, 913,000. That'll get us to, I think it's 90% design. So it's, you know, to the point where we can bid the project out and really go after grants. We will be going after a grant, a raise grant, to construct the bridge already starting this January. We're working with our sustainable strategies to draft that grant and get that in. We will be at 30% design. The likelihood that we get awarded a grant is pretty slim, but it gets us on the radar for the raise grant. This is likely a project that we will have to do some rather significant lobbying for to get the funds to actually put the bridge in. This is not a project that is necessarily going to fall to the taxpayers of the community. The pedestrian mall, the Plaza area, that's going to fall to us. But the actual bridge itself going over the Union Pacific Railroad and I-70, the vast majority of that is going to come from grant funding, or we're just not going to be in a position to build it. This town, we're not really in a position to afford an $18 to $20 million project for a pedestrian bridge. So the, the $1,103,000 project, we received a grant for just over $1 million, and we had pledged $100,000 out of the beautification fund to, to fund that project. And then just some miscellaneous Public Works and Parks projects. We've got the Spruce Meadows Fall Protection. We're going to start the process to look at the Veterans Park redevelopment redesign. We've got the Jensen Property Acquisition. Again, that's down on Front Street. That would be to acquire that property so that we can realign Front Street and add some parking. And then we did file a grant for non-motorized trails master planning in the amount of $60,000, so that's a total of about $600,000. The 550 of it comes out of the general fund. And that really kind of covers the majority of what we wanted to highlight for the capital plan. There's a couple other items in there. We've got, got to figure out what we're going to do with our website and how we're going to handle that. Again, that's something that we would perhaps look to get some grants for. We've got potential for, if you recall with FMLD, there are two grant periods. There's one in the spring and one in the fall. We can, there's a, and they both include a large grant and a mini grant. We haven't necessarily identified what we're going to go for a grant in the spring, but we will come up with something that will be additive. In the fall, as I indicated, we will likely be applying the larger FMLD grant to the next phase of Grand Avenue that would be done in 2026. One additional area that we're looking at is there's a safe, safe routes to school grant that's available for putting in sidewalks. We're looking at making an application for adding some sidewalks on Orchard that would, I think it's just from 7th Street.
West.
West to the school. That, it's a 50-50 grant that we're going to apply for to see if we can start really chipping away at getting that sidewalk in. But that's, that's pretty much the, the highlights of the capital plan. I did include the entire capital plan in your packets if you really want to delve into the nitty-gritty details of not only next year's expenditures, but future year's expenditures. And again, capital plans are always fluid. They're always changing based upon the priorities that the board sets going forward, how much money you want to spend, and, and in some respects, the amount of grants that you receive. Because we do offset a lot of our capital expenses with grants.
Question. So did we get a final number of what Home Avenue over in, overage was? And where did that money end up coming from finally?
I think our accounting is just shy of $1 million for Home Avenue. If you recall, it was in the budget for $450,000. The actual contract award initially was for like, I think, 730.
764.
764. That overage came from the Ballard Avenue project and a couple other projects that we didn't do this year. And then the overage beyond that is likely coming out of reserves.
Okay, just curious, I just, yeah.
And someday, if Main Street Plaza happens, we would get reimbursed.
Yeah, or 76,000.
Correct.
The total project for Home was 100, or $1,006,000.
Okay.
And then you minus the 76,000, the total project was 978,000.
Okay.
So, and we, I, the, the agreement that we entered into with Main Street Plaza was that they have to reimburse us. It's not eventually, if it ever gets built. They will be charged. They, they have payments that they will have to make and start making. And there's an interest component to, to that, that they would be paying us interest as well.
And that money will go back into which fund then, where it came out of the?
Yes.
Okay. Just curious.
Yep. All right. So then I just wanted to touch on some of the revenue side. We didn't really have anything that we added. Obviously, our sales tax is what our sales tax is. Our property tax is what our property tax is. We're not asking for any adjustments there because those all require voter approval. We did float the idea of a cigarette tax or a marijuana tax increase to which you, the, the board decided they wanted to take a slower approach to that and perhaps go to the ballot in 2025 as opposed to 2024. So there's no changes there. That really leaves us in a situation where we're looking at the fees that we charge for various items, whether it's building permits or licenses, inspection fees, water fees, et cetera. And so we've got, I think we, Nicole, did you hand?
I did.
That out? Also fines and forfeitures. We are, you know, real quickly, we are anticipating a increase in fines and forfeiture fees of 5%. The revenue number, we went from a budgetary amount of $30,000 to $55,000. And a lot of that has to do with the fact that we are more fully staffed now, and we have eager officers that are out there writing citations. And we want them to do that because we don't want to hear complaints about people speeding, not stopping at stop signs, et cetera. So we need to cite people for when they make infractions and, and take care of it. And so we'll see that increased revenue. Then, you know, we get to the community development, and Nicole's gone through her fees, permit fees and licenses, and made quite a few recommendations. If you want to kind of touch on them, Nicole?
I will. And what I handed you tonight is only amended for COMDEV. So you'll get another one of these when everybody gives their feedback to Sheila, and she adds everything for all the departments. Mine starts on page four where we never had it specified before that there, that we had a contracted building inspector and plans reviewer. We want to note that in there just because we've been struggling to find a building inspector. And so if we do end up continuing to use contracted services, we just want to make sure that it's noted in there that it's our actual cost. And then there was a couple permits on page five that should be at 100 and not 70. And then a couple more changes, really towards the bottom of page six with construction impact fees. We've been low on most of our fees, and we were hesitant to really raise anything since COVID. But I think we're at the point now that we can go on ahead and do a 6% increase and be still under most other municipalities. And so the construction impact fee would all raise by 6%.
And the last time we raised fees was 2020?
The, the last time, we kept in line with the actual cost of building. So since then, we've been doing small incremental amounts, like 3%. I think we did a little bit more last year. I'd have to double-check. We could have hit 6% last year, but we're still significantly under keeping up with the increase of everything since COVID. Just production costs and material costs have all increased far beyond what we've increased our fees to match. And then the water light, the water rights dedication and lieu of fees, those are significantly low. Jim was looking at something earlier that said it was like $86,000.
So the cost of a Big Thompson, CBT, Colorado Big Thompson water share is about $85,000. Right now, and, and a share is basically an acre foot of water. That covers three houses. That covers three houses for a year. Right now, our payment in lieu of water dedication is $1177. Comes nowhere near covering the cost of us going out and getting a water right. Now, that doesn't mean that all water rights out there are $85,000, but that's the biggest one that you can actually access, and it actually flows our direction. So, there's, we need to really look at that water right, or that payment in lieu of water right dedication fee to make sure that we're covering the cost of us acquiring a water right. We can't be giving that away for free. Now, the average statewide cost per acre foot is $20,000. But that's already established water rights. That isn't necessarily going out and acquiring a new one for the town itself. And so, that's something we really need to look at to make sure that we're covered, and we're not putting that cost back on the existing ratepayers.
We're at least not losing.
Yes.
Money on that.
And so, we've got the discussion to talk about the EQRs and setting those properly, because when the KOA and the tiny homes were built, the EQRs that were charged for all those camping units and as well as the tiny homes are below what they should have been charged at. Just, that's the way our code was written, so we really need to look at that. Nicole's working with our water engineer and attorney Sawyer to revamp those, so that's going to come down in the future. But we also have to look at what that payment in lieu of fee is going to be. Right now, it costs you $66,000 for an acre of parkland. It costs you not much for a water, you know, the water piece. And that's kind of backwards. So, we have a lot, we have a lot of work to do on that one.
Jim, I'm guessing this will also factor into the affordable housing matrix that will be worked on next year, some sort of a tiered. Once we determine what that average or median value is, that that will have to factor in, I'm guessing.
And this is, this is one of the difficulties of working towards affordable housing, is because before you put a shovel in the ground between building codes, between local, you know, tap fees and costs, you're at $100,000. That's what, you know, that's what we add to the cost of a building permit. So, it's not, it's very easy to go, yeah, we're part of the problem when it comes to affordable housing. Now, we're not as big a part of the problem for affordable housing right now because we haven't updated to the new energy code and the new building code. Those two, those two items out of that $100,000 are about $45,000. Because every house has to have, you know, a very tight envelope. They have to have a charging station for an electric vehicle that somebody who's trying to buy an affordable house is probably never going to own, but they still have to have a charging station. And I think they have to be solar-ready, too. And so, these are all things that add cost to a house that makes it harder to make it affordable. But yet, those are the new codes that we're eventually going to be forced to adopt.
And then, construction impact, we increased by 6% even though if something, I mean, you know what Home Avenue ended up costing. If there did, if there was a huge development that went in that ended up taking out one of our roads, it could cost upward of $1 million to fix. We might end up with another $1 million road. But, so, increasing it by 6% helps the problem, but it doesn't eliminate the possibility of what could come down the road. And then, tap fees, I don't think we had any need to increase the water or sewer tap at this point. The irrigation tap was, is still pretty low, so we increased that by 6%. And then, all of the building valuations were increased by 6% on page nine. But the bigger thing that we want to change is on page 10. There's, there's this chart that we've had. It hasn't had accurate numbers, but it's similar to the chart that the IVC uses, or that the International Code Council uses. And so, that's what we would be looking to do. Right now, we've been hemorrhaging money with having a $50 permit fee across the board because we charge $50 for a solar permit. And then, the inspector comes out twice. The electrical inspector goes out twice, but then our inspector goes out twice. And at $6250, an inspection, we end up paying out $125 when we only took in $50. So, at some point, we have to look at this and say, we need to recuperate our costs. And I know that, talking last year, everybody was, or the year before, everybody was very adamant on keeping the permit cost low because it encourages people to pull permits. But right now, we're essentially subsidizing people's work. And so, we have to get to the point that the building department isn't upside down all the time. So, by doing this table and going based off of the valuations, and then keeping in our fee schedule that inspections and permit, and building inspections and plan reviews are at actual costs. If the permit total cost, because it's all based off a valuation, but if the total cost of the permit ends up being $125 and they have two inspections, then we've at least covered the cost of the inspections that are going to take place. If it ends up being $50 and we need to cover two inspections, we would add that on to the permit cost at the time that they're paying for the permit and picking it up. So, we would have to look at how many inspections are needed and then charge the difference if it's not covered under that base valuation. So that, at least the town isn't paying for the inspector to come out and look at work that, that we would end up being solely responsible for the cost of. And that would be the same thing with the bottom of page 10 is instead of putting $50 in the cost of the plan review, we want to see the permit fee schedule, and then also still have the ability to charge whatever we're going to end up paying.
So, how do we document that in advance so that developers and as well as people making changes can program it out in terms of their own budget? If we have those dependencies to determine cost, how do we help them do the math?
I mean, I help people navigate this because it's a formula to get through some of these. I help people do that all the time when they come in. But for all the miscellaneous stuff, they're the ones telling us what the valuation is. So, if you look at, at page nine, where this is the guesstimate of how much it's going to take, obviously, this is significantly low. You can't build a residential house out of a wood frame for $126 a square foot. But that's the valuation that we would use for a single family. So, that is in here. The miscellaneous ones, like if somebody were to put up a fence and they said it took $2,000, they're the ones telling us. We haven't gotten to the point that we are requiring people to turn in receipts, or we just take for face value what they tell us that the total material cost is going to be, and we use that as the valuation.
And you know when they're off by that much, right? I'm assuming you have an internal stink test, or you're like, wait just a minute?
Yeah. So, I mean, and we, and there have been ones that I've questioned before with solar that, like, the exact same thing's going on in two different houses, and this one was $30,000 of materials, and this one's only $10,000 of materials. Then I can look back and then I can question it more. But there was one that they genuinely got it for cheaper than the other company did. And so, they were able to provide a receipt and prove that, I don't know how the other company got marked up by that much, but, but, I mean, so there are some that were like, okay, we need a receipt for that. But for the most part, people are pretty honest when they're coming in.
And as word gets out that they're getting caught, they'll be more honest, right?
Yes.
It has.
That's the hope.
I like the idea that we're controlling costs but not taking, not becoming a subsidy for it. I think we all want to keep costs down for these types of activities, but not at the cost of everybody else in the town subsidizing it. I don't feel like that's fair either. I think this is a good balance.
I mean, I think if we want to subsidize something, we can to encourage it. But, right, I mean, I don't know if we need to at this point.
I think that'd be like.
Shouldn't do it generally. If we're going to make an exception, then we'll make it, but.
Yeah, that'd be like a special project, a special project situation, not just across the board, every thing that comes in.
I think that comes back to your comment earlier regarding affordable housing. If somebody's genuinely building an affordable house, maybe some of these, maybe you waive some of these fees just to keep the affordability of that structure. And you work towards that end as providing some incentives. But I think, you know, I, at the end of the day, I think it's important for us to cover the costs of an individual building something so that, as a norm, the rest of the taxpayers are not subsidizing that.
Yeah, we shouldn't be losing money on people's permits. And that's what we're doing with contracted services, is unless we bill it at actual cost, we're losing money on it.
The parkland dedication fee for major subdivision and minor subdivision is the same?
I thought it was weird that it was the same, but I guess the parkland dedication per acre wouldn't necessarily change. I mean, the cost of the dedication.
It's based on the cost to develop an acre of parkland.
Yeah. Got you, okay, because I'm thinking.
And so, it doesn't matter whether it's a minor or a major subdivision.
You know, where they have 100 lots.
It's the same cost.
This is how much parkland, which is the acreage which speaks to it.
Right, right.
Yeah, but on first read, that caught my attention, too.
Yeah, or maybe I'm not seeing it right. But if somebody has, you know, like, like a lot and they want to subdivide it for three houses.
Yeah, and I, and the other, the other piece with parkland dedication, and we've talked about this as we get into the code rewrites, is that it needs to be up to, solely up to the discretion of the town board of whether you're going to accept a parkland dedication, or whether you want the fee. I mean, we don't need a lot of additional parks right now. We need large-scale playfields, but we don't necessarily need a bunch more pocket parks that are expensive to maintain and arduous to maintain, and they don't have a lot of features.
Or a lot of use.
Or a lot of use. I mean, they get used, all the parks get used. But, I mean, we need the larger tracks for soccer fields, baseball fields, et cetera, pickleball courts that are miles away from any residential. But those kind of things. And so, we have to, we have to adjust our way of thinking in terms of the acceptance of parkland or require the fee.
My other question, the off-street parking, not sure that we want this, is that?
That was my note for Jim as we were going through this. I mean, we, we don't want to encourage people to think that off-street parking is an option. We really want them to contain, especially with larger developments coming in. We want them to contain the parking in their, within their lot. And so, having that on the fee schedule would almost justify to somebody that we're willing to make that exception, that they can use street parking in lieu of. So, I'm not sure that we even want that on the fee schedules, what we had talked about.
Yeah. It's just, you know, it's a, we're struggling with parking as it is. And if you recall, we're working on updating our parking ordinance and our requirements because we've got, you know, these cohabitating going on where, you know, a two-bedroom apartment can have four people living in it with, that all drive, and yet, that two-bedroom apartment only requires one and a half parking stalls.
Yeah.
So, where do you put the other two and a half cars on the street?
That makes sense.
And we don't necessarily always have street parking available either.
Yeah.
So, ultimately, I think we should probably remove that section within our fee schedule and circle back around to it. I mean, because we can have that disclaimer that any fee not specified within the fee schedule would be at the discretion of the board. And that way, if we did come across something like that, and it ended up being something that the board decided was an acceptable use for them to have on-street parking, then you guys would be able to determine what that ended up needing to be.
Oh, okay.
I just think it might put the idea in somebody's head if they're.
Yeah, if they're looking through that, they're like, oh, I have an option, yeah.
So, what is the telephone utility tax per SMC on page nine?
So, that would be for the utility company to install a new telephone line, from my understanding.
Is that what the SMC means?
So, that's the Seltminas hook-up. Let me pull it up really quick and.
That's the franchise fee for the telephone company. They pay that every year, once a year. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Amy, they pay that once for all of the residents in Selt that they provide service to?
Yes.
Nobody's using phones anymore, everything's cell phones, so that's.
I know.
That's going away, pretty much. Okay. I just.
Yeah, that one's in my section, but that's not one that I collect, so I don't, I don't know about that one.
When was the last time that went up?
It's been 900 since I've been here.
After renegotiating the franchise agreement. It's come up periodically, and they're usually locked in. And I, the last time, I don't know if they put an escalator in or not. And so, it would be when that franchise agreement comes up for renewal, that would be something that the board could consider, is increasing that fee. And then, if you want to, put an escalator.
I'm sure they're charging more than they were 10 years ago, even if there are only seven customers. That's not our problem to solve.
Well, we pay for six lines.
So, us and one other person.
You're right, yeah, yeah. So, the last thing I really wanted to kind of cover this evening, and I skipped over it before, is the inevitable question of where is our fund balance? If we're going to be spending into our fund balance, where is our fund balance? And right now, our projection for the general fund fund balance at the end of 2024 is $6,693,000, which represents about 90% of our general operating expenditures. So, it's a very healthy fund balance. So, you know, the, I think, Treasurer Tucker, what's our policy? 15% is the floor?
30 to 40 is what the board has in our financial policy that they'd like to keep the general fund. 20% for the enterprise water and wastewater fund.
And so, we're more than double on the general fund. The water and wastewater fund is projected, and we're splitting that to be about $3.6 million. That's going to be split, and it's going to roughly be 1.8 in water, 1.8 in sewer. Those are actually kind of low for our expenditures and especially our debt service. When I was doing financial planning for communities, when it came to the enterprise fund, the recommended reserve policy was six months operating plus the following year's debt service payment. And so, it's a much more significant. And when you consider we're paying for the water treatment plant, that's a hefty sum of money that really isn't in our reserves right now. It's not something that absolutely has to be there, but it's something to strive towards. But the main reason I wanted to bring up the fund balance is in particular to the discussions of, you know, capital projects and are we spending beyond our means? I know that there have been discussions by the board in the past that you thought our fund balance was too high. Based upon our policy, it is. So, maybe you spend it down on some of these projects. And I call out spending fund balance. You really want to do things that are improvements to the community. You don't. You don't certainly want to do it and spend it on operational expenses. But when I look at cleaning up the Anderson property, buying the Jensen property so that we can realign Front Street and make that work and add some parking for downtown. Those are projects that have huge benefits to the community as a whole. Doing, uh, um, the community park rebuild. The $300,000 we're going to spend that will come out of reserves because it was budgeted for this year. That's a perfect example of something you want to do because they're, they're things that all the community gets to enjoy and are, are additions and positives to the community. You wouldn't necessarily want to use your fund balance to do your annual street repaving project because that's really an operational expense. But larger capital items, yes. But I will say it, and I'll say it all the time, it's a lot easier to spend your fund balance than it is to build it up.
That's true.
So I got a question on page, I don't know what five it is. This road maintenance program, $100,000 each year, what does that cover? That road maintenance program. Right here, it says road maintenance program, we got $100,000 in each year.
That's, if I remember correctly, that's the chip and seal.
Yes.
Is that what, because I know each subdivision is like 25, 260. So that's what that is.
That's a chip and seal. That's the program I'd like to get to. Once we get everything overlaid or replaced, have a seven-year chip and seal program. Every year, every seven years, those roads get re-done.
Okay, no, I just, makes sense. I just wasn't sure what was included in that.
And then some of your, your patching and stuff will come out.
Okay.
Do we have any projects for senior housing this year? Just because I know it has issues.
It's made a new building.
That's a bigger discussion that's going to come down the pike.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yep, no, it's a, I mean, it's a.
Anything planned.
It's a very valid discussion. We are going to have to look at how we are going to do major modifications to that facility or whether we're starting over.
I was thinking about if we had to start over, that that's a really prime location for other town uses, if it had to be built someplace. You know, making lemonade out of.
All things that we can consider.
Right, right.
The one thing we can't do is displace a bunch of, um, residents and not have a place for them to go.
Right, I don't want to do that either. That sounds like a bad idea.
So, you know, going to our next workshop session, it's all about the board kind of going through. And we will provide you an updated full version of the, the budget as it stands right now. But we have, you know, really one last item that we have to discuss from a budgetary perspective, which is the Shoshone Water Rights Dedication. And we'll have that discussion at the next meeting. They're pretty close to achieving the goal of, what was it, $98 million to buy those rights. Our token is not going to necessarily put them over the edge, but it's still a token that will help them attract the additional money that they need. And, you know, from our staff perspective, we kind of kicked around the number of $25,000 a year for the next three years, so $75,000. Glenwood is, uh, City of Glenwood is contributing significantly more. Rifle is about $100,000. Um, I'm not, I don't recall what Newcastle was.
Well, the City of Glenwood, a lot of their recreation business and whatnot is highly affected and benefited by it. So they actually should contribute more because they make more off it.
Yes. But that's.
Well, we do have a stake in it as well.
Yeah, one additional thing that we'll talk about at the next, uh, budget workshop. But really, at that point, it's for the board to make additional modifications or requests for information. And you, you don't have to necessarily request the information at this meeting. You can send me an email and say, hey, I want to know more about X, Y, or Z that's in the budget. We'll get you that information for the next meeting so that we can make sure that you can have a fruitful discussion on where you're going to take the budget.
Can't just yell them out to you now?
You could. I can take notes or Sheila can take notes.
I was going to yell something out. No, I was going to make a general statement. If that was a good time about budget. But it would maybe be something that goes more toward operational costs. And it's just, and maybe it would be something for next year. And it's just an idea for people to kick around. But I think as we grow, and, and this is also coming from going to that CML seminar, Uneffective Governance and everything. And so someone who deals with communication, um, I think might be something to add to. Like, the first day when we were having, if, there was a list of all our people. And I feel like maybe adding communication because, so, another thing.
You mean a public information officer?
So talk, uh, informing the public about public works, projects, for example. The chamber, uh, tourism, marketing, social media presence, web presence. I mean, I have a whole list of like the different things I think a communications person could help us with. And, and the lady at that seminar, she's kind of the town communication PR guru. And she was really impressive, um, you know, as far as like why you need someone like that and how they could. I just think as we grow, that might be something that we're missing in our portfolio that we, would really benefit us. And then you hear stories about, for example, these small community representatives talk about, maybe people look for low-hanging fruit, like people who don't manage their website well or whatever. And so somebody who could just be proactive and help us avoid any pitfalls from bad PR. Um, and also proactive about good PR. So, just my thought about maybe something that could help us, but.
I would outsource it for at least one, year one.
Sure.
And then you learn and grow from what they do. And maybe they want to go temp to perm or, or take on a part-time role as an advisory. But it's usually a quick way to get your marketing lined up across the innumerable ways that it has to be done and done well. And you kind of learn and grow, or Nicole and her team would learn and grow from that experience. And then you'd make the decision with Jim, okay, do we know enough to do it ourselves? Do we continue to outsource it and how? Going, going from no one to an FTEs, it creates challenges.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that we have no one. We have Director Santano who is responsible for.
Going from someone who already has 29 hats on her hat.
Right now, she's our designated public, uh, information officer.
She's designated for UMTI and other things.
Right.
Well, for an additional person in that department.
Right.
What we, what we have, I mean, we, we manage it as well as we can manage. And, you know, we have some, we have some barriers. Our website is not exactly easy to deal with in terms of getting information out there. But we do use social media to get information out. Could we, you know, be more effective? I'm sure we can be more effective. There, there's not, no doubt about it. But, you know, I, I am very cautious about doing a lot on Facebook because that can turn into a bit of a nightmare.
Sure. And to your point, I, I tend to agree with that. And maybe someone could do an assessment similar to like the housing is, what kind of, what needs do we have? What goals do we have? And would we even, I mean, how much would we dedicate to something like that? Part-time outsourced.
And it would, it would tie into the change to the website as well because that would have more outreach components built into it. Such that when something got posted on another channel, regardless of what it is, it would also show up on the website. Those types of things where you can leverage the, the technical stuff that we're building with some marketing know-how. And, and maybe it is someone, as your team expands, maybe that becomes one of the job requirements is have some marketing skills that they bring to bear. And they can be focused on that subset of your work.
And when we start the redesign of the website, we can integrate different things that'll help us link to like a one-stop shop type of, if it's posted here, then it'll just post everywhere else also. So it takes some of the, some of the time away from it. And then doing stuff like the comm dev software also will free up a lot of time for staff to focus on other things like communications.
Right. Or, but like, we don't have a chamber right now, do we? Or?
We have, uh, we are members of the rifle chamber.
Okay. So I just think, I see little things like that here and there where I feel like maybe that would.
And Alicia's going to be here tonight to talk about it from the strategic standpoint for the CRV EDP and, and what they're trying to do. Which ties into marketing and outreach and growth. We've got about five minutes left before our official session. Do we have anything else we need to cover for the work session?
Not really. Again, if you, if there are things in the budget that you want additional information on and for your discussion at the next meeting, send me an email and we'll work on getting that information pulled together. We'll work with the department heads to pull together prioritization lists for the capital items. And we'll go from there.
Thank you, Jim.
Shall we take five?
Alrighty.